All right, everyone, let's go ahead and start the U-46, oh, not U-46, the CCSU meeting tonight. It is 6:32. We are at the high school library. And this is the CCSU board meeting of May 26, 2015. First item on the agenda is any visitors, employees to be heard. Hearing none, seeing none. We will immediately move on to reorganizing this board.
Sue, there's someone here I don't know.
Oh, yes, let's make a quick introduction. The Prudential Committee decided to put on a new member on the SU board this year, Mr. Jason DeRosa, who is first-time board member for PC. I can give him a moment to introduce himself to everyone. Not to put you on the spot.
That's fine. Jason DeRosa, obviously on the Prudential Committee board. I don't really know what else anybody would like to know, but if you have any questions, let me know.
Just the deer in the headlights when we reorged and you had all those committee assignments. That was precious.
That was good.
All right, so I guess the very first thing is we need to elect the officers. So a motion would be wonderful for, we could do all three positions at once, right?
Sure.
Chair, vice chair, and clerk. Martha.
I'll nominate Brian Donahue as chair, Mark Dropa as vice chair, and Mike Smith as clerk.
Is there a second to that motion? Liz? Three. Any other discussion? We'll open it up just in case anyone wants to contest any of those positions. They want them for themselves.
So for the benefit of our new member, the roles of chair, vice chair, and clerk are just on a rotating basis.
Sure. All right. Discussion's closed. All those in favor of the motion for Brian as chair, Mark as vice chair, and Michael as clerk, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Brian, it's all yours.
Thank you.
Maybe I'll introduce yourself, Jason.
Yeah. I'm going to ask Ben to start with introductions, and then we'll go around that way.
Erin Knox, U-46 board member from Essex Junction.
I'm Liz Seubin, U-46 board member from Essex Town.
Judy D'Enau, superintendent, welcome.
I'm Brian Donahue, chair of U-46, and Liz here in Junction.
Mark Dropa, chair of the Westford Board.
Martha Heath, I'm the Westford Board.
Does anybody have a right?
Well, I'll give my introduction, just so it's on camera. I'm Michael Smith. I'm the chair of the Prudential Committee.
Marla Duran, I'm on the Prudential Committee.
Super. So thank you for the chance to serve this board as chair. I look forward to next year's reorganization. So we have a number of things that we need to do as a board on an annual basis during our reorganization. They were outlined in the org notes, and I have those up on the screen. What I'd like to do is review each one of them, go through and provide the context and purpose in which they serve, and see if there's any questions. At the conclusion, we'll ask for a single motion to accept all of them as we go through. Sound good?
Yep.
So, and many of these are stipulated by statute of being required for us to do. So on an annual basis, we must authorize bonding of required individuals. Those are individual administrators that have an exposure because of their roles and responsibilities to finances or employee benefits. So it's an aspect in which we authorize that bonding to occur. We authorize the superintendent to accept grants. Otherwise, they wouldn't have the authority to receive and expend a grant. So they need those, especially when it's involving the federal and state grants, which the CCSU has as a path through for much of special ed and other purposes. Authorize the payment of warrants upon presentation. We do this, the SU board meets roughly five, six times a year. So our frequency isn't such that we'd always be certain to be able to have the warrants signed by the board in ample time without incurring penalty or late fees. So we authorize those payments upon presentation, and then we review the warrants upon our meetings. We must, on an annual basis, authorize the board legal counsel. And it is recommended that we appoint Chris Leopold of Wells and Leopold to serve in that capacity. He does currently and serves the district and the SU well. We authorize the chair to appoint members to committees. This is completely on an as-need basis. I can, this will authorize me to create multiple committees and appoint thousands upon others to them, or not. We authorize the chair or the clerk to sign the warrants on behalf of the board. This is routine. This is, we've got 16, how many members, 16 members? 16 members, so again, it just streamlines it and makes sure that we get the best terms possible. And we must assert a newspaper of record. That newspaper must be a daily newspaper. So in our area, it is the Burlington Free Press. So we must name them as our newspaper of record. And then we affirm our meeting calendar for the ensuing year. It was in our organizational notes. It was the columnized basis by district and by entity, and we've all seen it at our local board level as well. So those are the motions ahead of us. Any questions or concerns about any of those? Clarifications needed?
Brian?
Yep?
On the warrants, like, we've just been signing the warrants. And when we say we authorize the chair to, let's see, authorize the chair or clerk to sign the warrants on behalf of the board, are we still, did we find out a legal opinion if we need a quorum of us signing those?
They're still checking that they need four signatures from our treasurer. So I'm assuming this means when, for those exceptions, like, if it's, I don't know, some different. I know on the SU board, we've always just had the clerk sign. But for the local boards, I still see that they're checking all three boxes for signatures.
So these just need the clerk?
Right, that's why I put it in front of Michael.
Well, they've got more.
Oh, okay. Well, there's more on there.
Well, that's okay. But I think it's still important to look at them.
Yes.
It's not required signature.
You said good. I mean, I think this is always one of those things, especially for us that sit on these two boards, that we always wonder, how many signatures does this need? And sometimes it's just fill in the number of lines, and other times, there's not enough lines. And so it may be good for, there might be some work of the policy committee just to clarify with Paul what is the requirement by statute, so that we can uniform it. Great. Again, hearing none. Is there no further questions or clarifications needed with regards to these items? So for the clerk, if you could record that the motion that will be made will be to be approving all these items? And that the two call-outs that are required are the call-out for Chris Leopold of Wells and Leopold and of the Burlington Free Press? And may I have a motion to approve these as presented?
You want us to move?
Okay. So Marla first.
I'll second.
Mark second. Any further discussion on the topic? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. Thank you. So we have VSA, VCSEA. That really needs a better acronym than that.
That's Erin's group, Council for Exceptional Children. And the superintendents annually hold a spring conference. And in the fall, School Boards Association and VSA hold a fall conference together. This year, on Wednesday, they had the eight-hour of board superintendent training. And I have to say how thankful I was that Michael and Mark and Brian did that in February with me, because it's really hard to do an eight-hour training on a Wednesday and then attend two conferences, two days of conference afterwards. And people were reporting that eight consecutive hours of training is a lot. So I think there's going to be a recommendation moving forward that they split that four hours maybe in February and then four hours at another time. I really appreciated the February conference when we trained, because the legislature was in session and gave us an opportunity to have lunch. The legislators came over to Capitol Plaza, and it was nice to have that exchange and that opportunity. And I think that, you know, with VSA under a leadership change now, with Steve Dale's retirement notification, and Nicole Mace moving into the executive position, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of change going on there. So Wednesday was that board training, board chair training with the superintendents. And then on Thursday was a full day dedicated to hearing Stephen Kukic speak. And he's a foremost authority in the nation on MTSS. So we had an opportunity, Erin and I actually attended with Marcy Lewis and a team from ADL, a whole day session with Stephen last fall. So some of this was some repeat, but it was always good to hear it again. And he was certainly acknowledging and praising the state of Vermont, because MTSS is now included in law, that we move forward with that framework. So I was proud to say once again that we were in the forefront of already having accepted that and spent a year with our leadership team, really unpacking the five components of MTSS. So that day was well spent, delving into that. We always have an auction that evening, raised over $3,000 for scholarships for the Alice Agnew Award and former Commissioner Mark Holcomb. So that was a lot of fun. We did it as a live auction this year, and I think that increased our amount that we raised. I was lucky to have some quality time with Brian O'Regan and Chris Leopold to have just some opportunity for consultation at the conference. And then on Friday, we heard report out from Franklin West and Chittman South Supervisory Union, and they had participated in the Livingston Report, which is a review of special education costs. And this company can come in and audit your system as far as special education costs are concerned, and then turn around and make recommendations. And there was certainly a lot of conversation about the use of paraeducators and the scheduling of services. So those were two big takeaways for us to learn from other districts, where they were given actually numbers of savings that they could realize in their districts. And I'm sure that Secretary Holcomb will be paying close attention to these reports as she's been charged with reviewing special education funding and to report to the legislature on that. We had already heard some of these reports, and once again, Erin's been in the forefront, working with Marcy Lewis, Suzanne Gwynling, Tom Botchansky, and just beginning with Fleming, Dan Ryan, to look at how we schedule special education services. Oftentimes, in the past, people look at their caseloads and teachers' schedule services. And now the recommendation is that we really look at the way scheduling occurs as far as in small groups and capitalizing on some grouping opportunities that could be more efficient and cost-effective. So you'll hear more at your June Carousel meeting about how those services and interventions can be both pull-out and push-in model. You've heard about that in the past. So I'm going to talk a little bit about service delivery, and Erin will provide a report on MTSS and her work with those principles. And then that was followed by Gary Marks. And I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with him, but he, his recent book is 21 Future Trends and trends that are happening across our nation and the world that impact educational decision-making. So this is a long time ago, like, 20 years ago, we started out with 10 trends. And it's been interesting to see, one, the trends actually actualize, and two, his continued focus on future planning. So that was also helpful information, and we received some really great handouts. And I'll have Ben post those to the board's site, so you can review the information at your leisure. I'll sobatwa. So it was a good work session. We followed up with another review that was done at the state level in the afternoon, Friday afternoon, on paraeducation services. A lot of focus will be on how we use paras, the clarity of their role. A lot of work in that area is forthcoming. So it was a good conference, great chance to, Dan Ro, Dan, I can't remember his name. Isn't this awful? I didn't bring my folder. We announced the superintendent of the year, and Megan Roy from Chittman South received the special education award for the Administrator Most Deserving this year. So we had award ceremonies. It's always lovely just to be with your colleagues and listen to, you know, the work that they're doing on the standards and MTSS. And I will say, at our business meeting, where there was about 50-ish superintendents in the room, Jeff Francis asked how many would be positioned to move forward with either a RED or accelerated study based on the new legislation, H361. And seven or eight hands went up. So, you know, I think there's some promise and people's interest in it. Casual meetings, like at dinner and breakfast and lunch times, lots of groups were talking together. So good conversation, and I'm hopeful that those conversations will continue to evolve. So that was conference.
Great. Thank you. Is there any questions for Judy with regards to the update on that conference?
I find it, it's affirming that the MTSS is being state adopted. It's also comforting that it's being adopted, not a different direction.
Yes.
So that's great. Congratulations to you and your staff in being in the right, on the right tracks.
Right tracks.
Great. The next topic is legislative update. Not much happened this year, so just kind of move on. There was an extensive briefing of, on sort of a section-by-section briefing that was part of the org notes on H361. And it's very valuable to read. I find it is a type of reading that needs seeping. You need to read it and sort of think about it and try to understand how it's impactful. I think we're going to be talking about this to some degree in the Carousel meeting.
Yes.
Because obviously, this affects all our districts and all our members. So I think for purposes of tonight, we want to be at the sort of the high level. What is the administration seeing and concerned about? And I think the org notes kind of sketches out that what is most concerning is this allowable growth of educational spending for '17 and '18. This is incredibly problematic. It puts all of our districts at an incredible challenge when you consider many of our cost drivers, personnel, benefits, outside contractors, are, you know, not necessarily always within our realm of control to try to get and achieve a 1.4, 5% spending increase. And that's, that again is, it's per pupil spending. So that is calculated by not dividing our enrollment, but dividing our two-year average ADM. And it looks at educational spending, which is not our net spending, but what is our total gross spending. And not our gross spending, but our net spending. So if we have a revenue deficiency, like in fund balance, if we execute our budget more in accordance to our plan, that actually could be an increase to our, to our educational spending in the subsequent year.
And every dollar over that is $2 that needs to be raised. So there's some tea that's been put in the legislation. The very good news is that once the budget passed, the high school and Grant was informed that dual enrollment will be picked up for the next two years by the state, so we don't have to budget for dual enrollment costs, which is very good news for U-46.
And our students at Essex High School.
And our students especially, yes.
So is there, on the high points that were in the org notes or even in the summary, is there anything particular that the board individuals wanted to question or find out a little bit more about?
Question, I'm trying to remember the financial report that Grant gave to the RED committee, because I was sick that evening, and so I watched it on video. And I'm trying to remember, he didn't do anything with the allowable growth in per pupil spending, did he? Because we wouldn't have known the numbers.
That was a glimmer in the eye at the time, because that was at a point where, what was it? The House was against it? They had a cap, and the Senate wasn't?
Senate did nothing.
So he was in, he was in between that, that sort of knowing what the?
So we'll probably be seeing that, the comparison with town of Essex.
So on June 2nd, which is your next RED meeting, George Cormier has been hired to do your financials as an outside consultant. He is going to show you the impact of the new legislation on the tax rate.
So you being the RED study group, which is a separate body from this.
Right. So you'll see the impact of this when your, when the RED study group receives the financial analysis next Tuesday.
Okay. So, and that's open to the public, for anybody who wants to come and watch it?
That's correct.
And I think with these kinds of numbers and challenges, we probably will start to see budget discussions happening, you know, September for the boards, because these are going to be, some of these could be insurmountable to stay underneath penalty.
That's true.
So I think, you know, I am only proposing, and I can be, and, you know, we can switch into a different direction if anyone so chooses. We'll cover this in a bit more depth at our June 8th Carousel meeting. And it really takes some consumption time to kind of work through all the section-by-section. So if there isn't anything else in the legislative update, then I'll move on. But please stop me if there's anything. Okay. So our next agenda topic was the climate survey update. Materials were the CCSU composite report was included in the organizational notes. And it does not give, at least I didn't see longitudinal data. It is a one-year snapshot of this most recent survey.
Right. And then, of course, after the orgs went out, we received the three-year trend data. So that'll be included Monday when you receive your Carousel notes.
Okay.
You'll see the trend data. And really, I'd like to suggest that, you know, entertain any questions, but wait for that trend data, because I think it helps make sense when you see three consecutive years. Our greatest disappointment was participation continues to fall with each-year administration of the same survey. So it's something just to think about as far as next year, we weren't planning on surveying. I did learn that the state was thinking about using a climate survey across the state, but I learned that it was only for students. So it doesn't have the other important stakeholders, teachers and parents. So we're going to have to delve a little bit more into, is it because they only chose to administer it to the student population, or is it more comprehensive? But I think this will be on our annual work plan to talk about in the future as far as climate surveys are concerned. They are school-based surveys, so that's, that makes it really a school-based conversation as far as what to do with the results. So your principals will be providing an update for you on your individual board's session after the Carousel portion of the meeting on June 8th. So you'll learn a little bit more about what steps, action steps they were taking to address what they learned from last year's survey, what they found helpful, and some preliminary thinking, because they haven't had much time to analyze this as a school or faculty yet. But some maybe two or three takeaways of what they're going to be planning for moving forward.
Do you know if the company that creates this survey has some minimum level of parent participation that they consider valid? My concern is that you only get the parents who are unhappy. And how, you know, what level of participation does there have to be before you can feel like it's more representative of the whole?
That's a good question. I can ask that question. It's pretty lengthy. It's like a 20-minute survey. It takes some time. And there was actually another survey done on taking surveys. And for high school students to participate in a survey, they usually don't like to go beyond five questions. So again, the length of time, because it's, the word they're in is, you know, so they were suggesting, like, there's this new tool where they get five questions, like, every other week. So you give them that opportunity to, you know. It was something that's developed by actually a former student. And it's an electronic piece that Armando Villasaka contacted me from Abu Dhabi to, you know, recommend that we review this.
So a former student, meaning?
Former high school student from EHS. So I'm looking, you know, it's on the bucket list to get to. But it's kind of interesting to hear him talk about how do kids take surveys? And I think the same is true of parents, too. I mean, people are busy. I probably get 10 surveys a day, you know, easily, if I come across my email.
It said in the first sentence, this is going to take 20 minutes. Maybe you don't want to say that.
Yeah.
This will take around 19 minutes.
It gives a heads up or not, right? You know, the good news is we continue to be in the normal range. And there's not really areas of major concerns for us. So it's validating in that respect. And it's, I think it's still a good tool. It asks good questions, and it can still be used for action planning purposes moving forward. forward. So I think it's important to take some time with it. You'll see, you've seen your individual school results at your last board meetings for your districts. And here's the SU one and then the trend data will be attached in your carousel meeting.
That would be particularly.
Yeah, I think that, I think the trend data will give us a lot more insight, Martha, to that kind of contextual basis, that we were at this with this much percentage and we're at this with this much percentage. It will help us validate a little. I mean, just for the context, we began three years ago with a staff board committee looking at the issue of climate, decided to pursue an independent professionally conducted methods-based kind of research survey. Shows this national organization that does surveys across the country so that we'd be able to have some norming capability of if you're a three, you need to understand whether the, the norm is a two or a four in that kind of basis to understand where to place your, your resources and energy. We agreed to do it for three consecutive years, then take a year off with the idea that we would then begin to pursue it every other year. What's happened now is three years has gone by. We have the longitudinal data that we can assess, but the state has now started talking about a climate survey. So we want to make sure that we're being efficient in whatever they're doing either works with what we're doing or whether we can expand their work to meet our needs. But again, that kind of professional-based, independent research methods is helpful to have.
Right. But I'll bring your question back. So for when we meet on the eighth, you know, I think if you're going to use the same survey over time, it might be good to see if there's a way to shorten it or condense it in a way that still feels reliable and valid, but it doesn't have to be executed soon.
You know, just to give my two cents on it, I took it and I, I did not find it overly long. I found it, you know, I, I don't know whether it's just more a point of, you know, making, making sure the parents are really aware and, and getting them excited and, and engaged in it because it, it's a whole different way of reaching them. You know, with the students, they're kind of a captive audience within the school. Although I was really disappointed in the EHS response numbers for students, it was a striking difference to all the other schools. But, you know, I, I think too that it, it's obviously important to the teachers because the teachers had a very high response rate. So, you know, I think that what I'd love to know from you Judy is, and I, I like your point, which is I'd, I think that the three-year trend information is really great, but I do also think some benchmarking would be really nice. So we can see the three-year trend, but I'd love to have some benchmark data. And then what I'd love to know is what is the process for us as board members, whether for just our own curiosity or whether maybe there's some members of the public that want to know, what would be the good, what would be the best process for if there were a particular area in the survey that we had a more in-depth question on or we were wondering to see, wanting to know maybe what the plan of action was for addressing? And I don't know whether that's something, I think you kind of alluded to, that it's, it's something that's more to the principal, but then is it something in your action plan that you have follow-up with the principal? Kind of, you know, like what is the, what are the follow-out steps for some of the, you know? But, but I totally agree, like right now, what we got was just that one, kind of one piece. So we definitely need to, to pull the other pieces together. But yes, I, I agree. I think that the parent responses were, I was surprised that, that they were as low. So, but then again, this is our third year. So I was kind of thinking, ooh, what could we do for next year to get the parents more?
I was actually, you gotta go against your point though.
Yeah.
I was concerned with all the lack of staff that seems to be responding to the survey. If we can't even get them to be overwhelmingly responding, I don't see how we expect the students or even the parents.
I think it was in the eighties, wasn't it?
No.
No, it's actually in two schools. It dropped over twenty percent.
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering, I mean, have we gotten any feedback from them who says, hey, we find this pointless or it's not doing anything for us? That it drops so significantly?
The first year we administered in the fall and we received feedback that the committees thought we would have a higher participation rate if we administered in the spring. So we administered last spring. And I don't have any evidence of this, but I, I think that the administration of the S-Bug this spring may have had an impact on teachers readiness to, or capacity.
So was it fall, fall, spring? So for the three years we did fall, fall, spring?
Fall, spring, spring.
Oh, fall, spring, spring, okay.
Yes. And so, you know, and as a leadership team, we haven't even had a chance to, these results are just fresh off the press for us. So we haven't even had a chance. I know that EHS had a great plan that they were going to administer and make the survey available for all students to take during advisory, which was a wonderful plan, except that when they went in to do it.
But apparently a thousand people hitting the site all at the same time is able to crash their server.
They crashed it and then they never really recover after that experience.
Yeah.
So there were just some hiccups along the way that, you know, IT actually did it. It was annoying as could be, but they did a good job of, every time you called up the website, the survey would pop up and say, have you completed the survey yet?
Yeah.
I thought that that was a pretty good way that anytime anybody went to our website to be reminded that the survey was there and that was our strategy to increase participation. Maybe it annoyed people. I think we had the opposite effect on it. I'm not sure. Or maybe it was like climate, yeah, survey exhaustion. You know, you can over survey and maybe the idea of every other year is a better, you know, those are all the things I think we should talk about moving forward. And we talked about in the annual work plan, having one of the task teams analyze the survey administration again, our thinking around it. Do you remember that, Marla?
I'm, oh yeah, I'm clueless to remember and I didn't bring my annual work plan with me because I thought it was in the org notes and I don't think it was.
It dropped off the annual work plan when we believed it was from the state. Brian, could you go back to?
Oh, there it is, yeah.
So this is what we have for the annual work plan.
So if you take a look at, let's say, the staff participation numbers from thirteen, fourteen to fourteen, fifteen, it's, it's, there, there's no identifiable pattern amongst all the schools. Some went up, some went down. The ones that went down tended to go down the same amount. So this, I, I think it's difficult to draw any conclusions. If anything, this may indicate to us that the, that, that tools such as this might be more based on perceived need. So if there is a need to communicate from staffing, from staff to, to, you know, the boards or to administration, this is one method. If there's not a need, this might be also what we see. So I would, I would actually take that question back to the, to the administrators of the exam, the survey, and ask the question of what is statistically, statistically significant versus trends elsewhere for participation? Because I really don't think we can draw any conclusion from the data shown here.
Yeah, I certainly feel that way too of trending.
The results are still, the results are still valid. It's just, I, I don't think this indicates to us what we should do next year in and of itself.
Well, I think we've definitely taken next year's administering off.
Next time.
Yeah, next time.
I look back at my son when he got to middle school and I can tell you the surveys, he probably would not have even touched them because they get to that, he got to that attitude, nothing's going to make a difference. You know, if there was something he didn't like, he was one of those real negatives. And he would have been the same way in high school. He would have found it a bother. I also know from Essex Junction, Rexon Parks, they put out a survey and the parents that are on that committee, we looked at the survey last year and every parent on that committee complained at the length. They wanted something that was going to take not longer than five minutes, they wanted four or five questions. And they were very clear and Brad changed how they're surveying now. So if that's an indication and those parents that are on that committee are so committed to Essex Junction, Rexon Parks, that if they're squawking about the length of it, then I think it's something to listen to. You know, I think as a board member, if I had a child in school, probably like Erin, I would be interested in it. If I didn't have, wasn't on the board, I probably wouldn't pay a bit of attention. And if I was a staff member and nothing was going wrong, why would I bother to fill it out?
Mike? I think that we should, at the September CCSU meeting, be informed about what the state's progress is and intentions are about a climate survey. Become informed and be more informed about surveying at that point and then see what we do. I, I think, you know, the three-legged stool, the three primary stakeholders within the educational equation, parents, staff and students, is still really important to me. I think that's the only way you can see the sort of the three dimensions of climate. So, and that it's independent, that it has some kind of norming to it, it can get into benchmarks. And ultimately, any survey is almost like the Doyle poll. You know, its value is that it has been administered for thirty-three years or something like that at town meetings. It's the, it's the, but the longitudinal.
Is that the most unbounded survey I know of?
But it's the only, it's a.
There's no control over how many times.
It's a dipstick of attitude.
It's a dipstick.
And it becomes, it becomes, it's, it's meaning becomes the length of which a question has been asked to be able to see the different populations go through it. So I think any survey cannot stand on a single administration.
Brian, really quick question. This might have been discussed. This was only electronic, right? The only access to this was electronic?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I just think that's something to consider.
Okay, we're going to move into policies in the second reading. Just, have you had your orientation?
Yes.
Okay, so you've got our whole policy thing down. This is excellent. Another committee for him. So this is the second reading. At this point in time, it's come through us once, it's gone to all the local boards once. At the policy committee, was there any feedback that came back? So I'm imagining this is pretty pro forma at this point in time. So we have two policies, G eight D and G ten here for second reading. Those are, if I remember correctly, those are support staff.
Employee practices.
Employee practices and then also the policy to bring us into ADA compliance. ACA.
ACA.
Wrong acronym. So.
Just to get the conversation started, I'll move back. We approve policies G eight D and G ten as presented at second reading.
A second.
So is there any discussion on these policies at this point? Hearing none, I'll move to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
So annual work plan, it was included, there was a link included in the org notes to the Google Doc. It hasn't, this also came through, I think, all the local org notes last meeting, last month, this month, recently. So, and leaders at work finished up this month and is moving this with a recommendation. Marla, you're the chair of that. Do you have anything to say about the AWP for CCSU?
Pretty much, just the one thing to point out for those that weren't aware of it, doing the color coding, the black, we just know that it's a very long annual detail, annual work plan, but all of it is necessary. So we asked for the items in black to be the things that, those are the things that administration is expected to do year after year. So I think that was the only change in this one. And again, almost everything on the annual work plan is based upon what the state or the federal requirements are that administration has to follow.
Yeah, much of this one right here under curriculum instruction assessment are just, are mandates and requirements with certain deadlines for us to achieve compliance. I think the, the discussion was focused a lot around making sure that there was ample capacity for the aspects related to the RED study. It, it weighs heavily on extra meetings and timeout preparation, plus Judy's staff to support that RED study committee. So we don't want to, it's not a year for us to be overly innovative when we know that our capacity is already at a stretch point. Do you have any comments about the AWP?
I would, I would add that this is now the third year where we're going through this process. So each time we do it, we're bringing some learning forward from the previous year and trying to be good about working within the, the confines which we've discovered. So you're talking about capacity quite a bit and requirements. It's worth noting that just keeping up with requirements is, is pretty much enough to, to fill out this entire chart. But we still have a great deal of high expectation for our superintendent and administration to work on refining the systems and initiatives that are currently in place. So you may see parts of those showing, showing up here as just, as Marla mentioned, continuing, continuing goals or continuing expected work. But that's really where we start to see the efficiencies of our mature systems come into play. And so the directors and their ability to effectively plan and launch programs and then watch them mature over two, three years is all kind of contained here, even if it's not specifically spelled out. So don't read into the earlier statement of we're trying to keep things purposely shorter in lists with, with anything other than just the fact that we recognize that many efforts are multi-year and have a great deal of continuing work associated with them.
We tried to do a short list, didn't work.
Well, this is also a blueprint for how we, how we are going to approach our evaluations. So it's important to make sure that we recognize where evidence does need to be gathered, where we need to be paying attention to performance and expectations. So it has a great deal of additional context beyond just the AWP.
And Michael, you've had, you've had a lot of work in this as well? Any?
No, Mark hit the, the last point, which was, you know, that, that, this, this is just a continuing, continuing to develop document and it goes rather nicely with the evaluation process.
So this is an action item for the board. Is there a motion to approve the annual work plan as presented?
I will move that we approved the annual work plan for the year fifteen, sixteen.
Second. Any further discussion?
So we did ask our boards, each of our local boards for any feedback. I think it's worth sharing that. Uh, I think it's worth sharing that, um, that there was no feedback, at least from Westford. So, that I take as a recognition that this accurately captures the expectations of our board members.
And that's, um, also the case for U forty-six. It was brought to U forty-six on two separate occasions. Um, there was confirmation that these were the things, um, that should be in the CCSU annual work plan and that it's confirmation that this is our priorities and focuses.
Can you find, you-
Uh, well, PC, we had, uh, uh, some initial comments and those were addressed. And then, um, this version here received no additional, additional comments.
So, if no further, I'll move to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. Um, so, what I'd like to do is I'd like to suggest that we strike the next topic in this order, um, with the understanding that it's my intention to pull recording secretary agreement from the consent agenda and have that discussed. So.
Can I ask a question, Brian?
Yep.
We were given information in the org notes about the, um, nutrition services program?
Mm-hmm.
That was just information for us, there's no discussion on that tonight?
Nope, but we can, there certainly is we-
If we had questions about it?
We, and we can also do some future agendaing.
Okay, so that we can just do that as a future, okay.
Yeah. Um, so, I don't hear any great opposition to my suggestion, so I'm gonna move into consent agenda. Are there any items to remove from the consent agenda?
Um, I'd like to pull the meeting minutes of March thirtieth.
Okay, and I would like to pull the recording secretary agreement. Is there anything else to be pulled from the consent agenda? Okay, so, remaining on the consent agenda is approval of warrants and approve the FY sixteen supervisory union budget. So, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Seconded? Second? Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions, none, passes unanimously. So, Martha, you pulled the, uh, minutes from March thirtieth?
Yeah, it's, um, it's a little picking, but let's see. Gonna pull them up here, sorry. It's moving very slow. All right, do you have them?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, in line forty, it says Martha added that the Secretary of State caution to make sure you do no harm should be the Secretary of Education.
Okay. Ben, tell us to stop or slow down if there's anything that catches you. Okay? Is there any other changes or amendments to the minutes as presented? Nothing? Anyone else? Can I obtain a motion to accept the minutes from the March thirtieth meeting as amended?
Some.
Second? Second? Erin? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. So, I pulled, um, I pulled the recording secretary agreement. You saw in the org notes that, um, and I agree that it may add to our efficiency and also free up opportunities for all sixteen of us to participate in the meeting. Sometimes when you're clerking the meeting, especially if there's a topic that you are either, um, bringing to the table or trying to participate in, it can be difficult. So, um, we are looking, we will, we have appointed a clerk of this board and like serves in that capacity. Um, but we are looking to have a recording secretary. A number of the boards have moved in this realm. You can see this as an agreement that was part of the orgi- organizational notes that would include our great benefit of having Ben join us on these six occasions. We might even have extra meetings if Ben's gonna be here.
Well, I'm looking at kind of the guy.
Like in a head of our-
Regular scheduled meetings.
Um, so, that is the context and the effort. Um, if we have a motion, we can open it up for discussion. So, a motion to, um, to approve the recording secretary agreement. Do I have that motion?
I'll move.
And a second? Great, there it is for second, he's on, he's on the books.
He's on.
It's batting average starts. Um, so, is there any discussion with regards to this, with the agreement, with the approach? Any former clerks wanna speak up about?
So, this is, um, this is the second year that we've kinda had this, third year we've had this discussion. Right, and, um, we had a secretary, we didn't have a secretary, and we can potentially have a secretary again. So, it might be worth formalizing it, um, moving forward, so, so this isn't necessarily in question. Um, it may be more difficult to find a secretary moving forward. So, you know, offering some, uh, level of stability perhaps to the position might, might make it a little easier. And if that's the direction we tend to be moving in, then I, I understand it.
Yeah. Yeah, does it, does it meet that need at all to, um, sort of institutionalize this into our board reorganization process? So, that at least each board as they constitute have the opportunity to make the decision, but it becomes a little bit more routine?
That's a reasonable way of dealing with it, I would assume?
Do the other boards who have recording secretaries make that decision on an annual basis? PC does.
PC is the only board and they make it annually.
Okay. Then I think that makes sense to have be part of the rework.
Rework.
You know, and, and no one at least comes up. It doesn't mean that the person doing the job knows that they have that job again next year. But if you're working for a board, that's always a possibility anyway, I think, so.
I think that's a good suggestion.
Okay. Just for the public, I think when I used to clerk years ago for the PC, it was within five days, but it was, the weekend was allowed. So, I'd get my, you know, we'd have a meeting on a Monday night. I'd finish my notes on, uh, the board, uh, minutes on a weekend and get them to central office on a Monday. And now that they've come out and they're so specific that it's five days, it doesn't matter if it's during the week or the weekend. So, when you meet, most of our meetings are on Mondays. I find it with working another job, it's impossible for me, when I was clerk, to meet those requirements, those legal requirements. So, I think for the general public, I think it's important for them to know there's legal requirements around these minutes.
That's a great point. And that's five days to be posted on the district website if you're, if you have a district website. So, that, you know, five days posted on the website does not mean, you know, running up to midnight cause the board's members aren't posting it. So, it's going to central office, somebody needs to be there during business hours. It's a great point.
And I, I'll be very honest for the PC, I've missed a couple deadlines. I mean, there's no way I could make it, you know, for some of the temporary meetings. Cause Ben's only at the official meetings.
You don't mean to confess.
Let's all leave that there, okay? Um, we have a motion that's been seconded on the floor to approve the recording secretary agreement that was included in our organizational notes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Abstentions? None. Passes unanimously. So, future agenda topics, well, actually, this is one of our quickest turnarounds cause we're back, kind of in essence, the SU is back together again on the eighth of June. Those organizational notes have been designed, put together, and will be distributed-
Monday.
Monday. So, probably not for that agenda, since that one's, um, in. Right now, those, the key ones, once you give folks, uh, if you, if you remember better than I do, quick recollection of what we'll be covering, I think it's the, the three carousel topics.
Uh, the three carousel topics are gonna be our data system, um, the organizational journey, where, where we've been and where we're going, our local assessment plan, um, and an overview of MTSS and where we find ourselves in that process as well.
And we'll also be filling in, I, I guess I was wrong to limit it to the three cause I think we're also planned in, in legislative update.
Yes.
We're not discussing the food program, did I miss the first bullet?
Not at this particular meeting.
Not at this meeting, but, um, I included it, so you had like some data about our participation rates over the course of this year. Um, so, I was, my thinking was that in September, um, you would, at your first SU board meeting of FY fifteen, you'll be able to, um, maybe make, have a conversation then about participation rates and where we find ourselves. Um, we'll be offering a summer feed program in Essex Junction this year. Last year, um, there was another food service that offered that program. This year, I'm thrilled to report that, um, we'll be feeding students at Maple Street Park as well as Fleming School. And there's a lot of students at Maple Street Park, so, um, looking forward to our summer feed program. But also looking at, um, what ways we may continue to have a conversation about addressing subsidy.
So, I would suggest that this information, at least for our particular districts, be included in our August board notes. So, that we have the opportunity as individual boards to, uh, to see the data and, uh, some questions. And then I think CCSU board members would be better prepared at the September meeting to talk, um, talk about it through the lens of what's going on in their particular districts.
That's a great T O. And, and I think it, it's good timing actually in September because that's the beginning of SU budgeting. And this will be one of the issues that we, that we'll need to wrestle with, so, that's good timing.
And, and can I? Could I ask that when we do that discussion in September, could we have some information about whether other school districts that are meeting with federal guidelines are having the same issues that we are in terms of the balance sheet? Could we try to get some information about that?
Yeah, well, this is helpful, um, to get that advance request too, thank you for that.
The, my assumption is after our conversation last year, noting, knowing that we're in arrears and it seems like it's happening every year. My assumption is that coming September, there will be a solution brought to us or it's gonna be embedded into budgets. Instead of going forward like this, especially if we become a red district, I, I think it's something we need to address and have accomplished. And I'm not sure how the town of Essex provides their program, but it might be a comparable that we'd wanna look at.
Yeah, I think September, um, you know, our, our route is we meet a bunch in the fall. So, we usually have a September, and then do we go up to November?
No, we have-
December?
I think we have an October meeting which just budget, right?
September and October.
Right, so we do budget and other things in September.
Right.
In October, we do just budget.
Yes.
So, I'm thinking in-
In November, we do budget, finance.
So, if in September, Marla, if we're able to get the context and get some grounding, um, understand the various districts' participation, kind of the, here's what you need to know. And then we go into October with them laying out some strategy to say, this is what we are in deficit to U forty-six for right now. This is how we get out, this is how we, this is, these are the changes that we're recommending. Uh, because then some of those changes may have to come back into the local district as far as scheduling or programming or, you know, I, I think, I, I just come from a personal viewpoint that we can't operate school without the food service. You know, it just is essential for sort of feeding minds and feeding bodies kind of thing is just connected. I think as we embrace that, there, there could be structural things that we do to, to, as boards, really look to make sure it's as successful as possible. Because that gives us overall success. You know, it's not the add-on. It's as integral as the library and the nurse and all the other supporting services that make it possible. But that's how I kinda tier it up. Really, let's make sure, and I, I'd like to just leave it open that if you have an agenda topic or you have a question or there's an information need, just, you know, send it to myself and Judy at any time. We can collect it and then when the org notes are getting assembled, we can just kinda pull from that collection of thoughts.
In the past, it was always that we sent our questions to the board chair and the board chair made the decision as to what to bring forward to the superintendent. Is that the protocol for CCSU?
Um, you know, my preference even at the U forty-six is that an email to, any email to me can be copied to the superintendent. Um, if you need to reach out to me separately, um, do so, but know that we've, that you are choosing a route that is moving us, separating us from our greatest resource. So, um, but I'm happy to, to deal with things offline. I'm gonna quickly turn things into board conversations, um, because I just think that's the way it should be. Um, but happy to sort of be a collector. And then ideally, what I can do as a collector is identify themes and keep us so that we're not in this direction and then twenty minutes later, we're in this direction and we're all kind of trying to figure out which way we're going.
So, a quick comment on the food service. Keep in mind that September is after the school year started, so if there's any plans in place um, for changing, um, perhaps the, the cost or whatever, chances are they'd already been put in place. So, if there's any modeling going on to understand how to change the financial situation, I'm guessing Grant has already started it, is working on it, and it'll be in place by the time we get to that point. So, we might be, we might be looking at maybe the longer term-
Yeah.
Um, uh, uh, plan, not this year's plan, and that's not even a function of what we do here anyway, so.
But I do think he's been pretty clear that he doesn't think the answer is in raising the price.
Yeah, his participation drops.
Yep. But there may be something in place. Anyway, so, um, I'd like to, I'd like to see something, um, perhaps around communications to our communities about this year's legislative fallout.
Mm-hmm.
So, I know that that's something that I'm planning on doing with my community, um, in the very short term. But there's a great number of potential changes that are coming forward and I, I think it might be helpful to start addressing those, um, publicly now, so they're not as big a surprise. We're certainly gonna see some budgetary changes because of what's happened. And some of those, um, pieces of information are, are helpful to get understanding around before you have a number to attach to them.
And also with what Mark's talking about, what I find is when we address it, if we can get right down to stay away from educational speak or legislative speak and give some concrete examples, because I think the public that's not on the board really needs to see the dollars and numbers and how it's gonna be impacted. and how it's gonna be impacted. So, if we can keep it simple and understandable, 'cause I think sometimes we have a tendency to think people are understanding and they're not.
Yeah, I'd like to make sure that we're engaging as equal partners, our legislators. We, I feel as a school board member that I'm often in the position of explaining legislation. And I think that's just difficult at times. It's, it's difficult to wear the right hat, it's difficult to know how to express it. Funding formulas and other things is that I'd like to make sure that we provide a platform for our elected legislators to be able to speak out on these issues. I mean, somebody like Tim is infinitely more informed of how we got to something than I am. I mean, I just see it in newsletters, I, I'm not part of all the testimony. So, he, we, we should be working on trying to give them greater voice through our communication and through our avenues. Maybe even, you know, opening up our, our schoolhouse announcements for, you know, topical explanations from them. Other things like that. I mean, I, I think there's an opportunity to re-energize our communications task team on, on, maybe on a KISS principle of a little bit like we've been talking about, the red, is that we finish up a meeting and we say, these are the three things we've done and these are the three things we're doing at the conclusion of a meeting. So that, you know, it may not be everything, and it may not be a huge explanation, but it provides some communication out. I think our search for perfect communication has us pretty quiet. You know, we're always looking for sort of like the perfect, the perfect letter or the perfect article or something like that. Meanwhile, we're just not, you know, I, I think of kind of a page from the Essex Select Board just kind of, just kidding, really quick turnaround. This is what's, this is what we did, and this is what we're doing. And it's just, it might be something that we could do. I think I'd like the, obviously, the red should be taking some priority right now on time, but as that changes and evolves, it might be good for this committee instead of future agenda topics, which I think we can do asynchronously offline. I think sort of that sense of, okay, what did we do? Well, we, we approved this tonight, and we approved this, and we're gonna do this, and we asked for this information. Great, let's put that on front porch for, let's get that out. You know, we can turn that around in twenty-four hours. It's just a lot more simple. I think that gets some of that communication going.
On other topics, we have a summative eval that the three board chairs are gonna be, I assume, working on over the summer. And is that going to be brought for approval in September, the superintendent's evaluation?
Uh, yes. That is the plan.
Okay.
That's our assignment.
Okay, just, just checking.
Great.
Better way of reviewing evidence of this issue.
One other thing, I wonder if we could discuss maybe future agenda or maybe it's something the three chairs could with Judy. Because of the leaders at work and we decided to cancel June's meeting, we were caught up with our work, and there's so many things going on in June. I'm wondering if we should look at the task teams and the months that we've got them meeting. And I think it's hard to expect our superintendent to be at all these things in June. Superintendent is busy being at graduations, barbecues, you know, there's- I mean, trying to get out a calendar with Judy and set a date is difficult certain months. I think if the three board chairs, I would put it in your hands, that maybe just as we set up board meetings, maybe we need to look at the task teams and what months they should be officially meeting, what months are, are to stay away from.
Yeah, I think it's a great point. It's, it's like one of my favorite things to do is calendaring and looking at it. I know that, is that, you know, December is the budget work sessions for Westford. And we don't have a December CCSU meeting. And then February is EJ, and we don't have a February CCSU meeting. But January is our work session, and we have one. And it just starts to get, you know, when you get into that like seventh or eighth school board meeting in a month, it gets, it gets tiring. So, I think if we can look at those things, and if nothing else, just be like, okay, you take this one, I'll take the next one, we don't need, you know, our two reps at this meeting this month. You know, and just, it just makes it a little bit more conscious decision. We'll be in negotiations at that time.
That's gonna be big.
So, you know, that's a whole new drain. So, I think we've gotta look at certainly the superintendent's capacity, but we've also-
Your own capacity.
Yeah, I mean, we, we had, we had a number of unfilled seats this year. Because people can start to count up and say, wow, that's thirty-five meetings a year, you know? So.
Jason hasn't heard that.
I said three to five. It was three to five. Oath has been taken. But I think that's great, I think it will be one of the things I'll, I'll take a look at.
'Cause I think now that we've gotten into how we do the evaluation of the superintendent, I think we can plan for meetings so that we're doing work around it and I'm assuming policy could get on the same schedule.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to, and doing it under, with the sort of the, the view and advice of council in really trying to use our electronic tools, but making sure we don't touch upon open meeting law. But how can we do some of this stuff asynchronously so that you're not missing work or family requirements to, to attend these meetings? It's a great suggestion to line those all up. It may seem a little depressing when we do that, but it would be good to at least know.
Well, I think the other reality, what I'm concerned about is not just board members burnout, but the work that I see you, Mike, and Mark having to do in all these meetings, the extra meetings you meet as an executive committee. I, I just think continuity on the board is very important. And I just think the more we can address to make this job easier.
Thank you. Any other future agenda topics for this time? Again, invitation is open through, we'll probably look at second, going into the third week of August, doing org note pulled together. But we'll be proceeding that with the August meetings for food service. Anything else for the good of the order? Then thank you very much, may I have a motion to adjourn?